Was handled. I think Melinda came up here and made a decent argument as to why it should be increased due to inflation of our growing population and the cost savings. However, I don't think there was an argument made about why there shouldn't be a limit at all on utilities. And I felt like you guys had an obligation to either push more or discuss at least even a large increase on the limit. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Moving on to six.
Mayor, we have an addition to Section 6. It's a proclamation that's been prepared. So if it's all right with the commissioners, I'd like for you to consider a proclamation that would honor Commissioner Dale's service to the commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented on for making Commissioner Dale Day.
James, or second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Melvin Dale Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. And Mayor, if you, I can read that while you guys are walking forward and then I feel that you will join Commissioner Dale down the front. We'll take your picture. So whereas Melvin Dale is faithfully, as a member of the Garden City Commission, has served faithfully as a member of the Garden City Commission since January 2013 and served as mayor from April 2017 to January 2018. And Commissioner Dale has played a vital role in the growth and development of our community. And whereas Commissioner Dale's performance of duties and responsibilities as a member of the governing body has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in Garden City. And whereas Commissioner Dale has dedicated many years to representing people of all ages, races, ethnicities during the deliberation of community issues. And whereas Commissioner Dale's achievements, exemplary conduct, passion, and sense of fairness demonstrated in all his activities have earned him a special place in the hearts and minds of the people within this organization. Therefore, now therefore I, Dan Finkhauser, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim February 19th, 2019, as Melvin Dale Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his significant contributions to the community and highly commend the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities as a member of the Garden City Commission. Sign and seal this day, 19th day of February 2019, Dan Finkhauser, Mayor.
Maybe I'll sign it.
Yeah.
No.
Very good.
All right. Ready?
Hey, that's right in the back.
Can I say a few words?
Sure.
It's hard. This is the greatest group I've ever worked with and have been with several commissions in the last six years, but it's been an honor to be with them. It's been an honor to work with Matt. His sidekick Jennifer, who's always been a fool me and is always one of the hardest worker. I miss you. Our attorney that keeps us upright. Most of all, I want to thank my wife. She's been behind you 100%. And this was a big decision we had to make and we decided that we best do it while we had the opportunity and could do it. And here we are. But it's the staff, the citizens of the community are the most important thing that I've always thought about and I know this commission will always have that in mind. So I say to the people out there, thank you for having the respect for me and voting for me and allowing me to serve you because it's been an honor. This today at the end will cap off. In my mind, will be my history, whatever that amounts to, but I started in 1958 into serving our country. 20 years of that. I worked for the city, the county, and the state, 30 years in law enforcement, and another six years with the city. It's been a pleasure and an honor. I'm so thankful. And you out there, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Rest of the meeting's just going to kind of feel like a bit of a letdown after that. Thank you, Commissioner. Item 6A on your agenda, but what will be 6B now because of that proclamation. The governing body has asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 1st, 2019, as Reed Across America Day in Garden City, Kansas. Is there anybody here representing Reed Across America Day?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mayor Dale, I mean Commissioner Dale, ex-Mayor Dale.
That's former.
Former. That sounds better. It's been made and seconded that we proclaim March 1st and as Reed Across America Day. And I'll read this proclamation at the Albright School on the first, I think it's 8:30.
8:30.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7A, Finance Director Hitz is here and will give a presentation of the year-end financial report from Service and Finance. Melinda?
Good afternoon. It's always nice to come and talk to you for the year-end financials. We just had recently had the auditors in. So if I can just give you a few little highlights on what you'll see before the actual audit comes out in June. Your general fund at a glance, for the 12 months ended, the revenues were in the center column there at $24,796.03. That is above what we revised our budget to, so that's always a good item to notice is that we do budget conservatively on our revenues. So when it comes in better, that always helps us out with our cash balance. When you look at the expenditures, we're at $23,978,294, which is less than the budgeted expenditures. We do budget for all of our authorized positions in the general fund, so when we can save some money with vacancies throughout the year, that's where you're also going to see some changes in your cash balance coming in a little bit higher than normal. Through the utilities at a glance, you can see that all of the utilities were higher than what we had our revised budget set at. I want to make note of the solid waste utility. In 2017, the revenues were more than they are in 2018, but that's due to the FEMA reimbursement that we got in 2017.
How much was that?
That was right around $800,000.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we always look at our city sales tax, county sales tax every month, so I'll skip over that. Our franchise utilities, the gas utility came in higher than what we had expected. Telephone is going to continue to go down due to less landlines in the community. And cable TV is slightly less than last year, but more than what we had budgeted. Building permits are down from last year slightly, around $50,000, and municipal court fines were holding pretty even. The next page gives you explanations on what we just went through here on the front page, but I do want you to turn to your cash balance report. And if you can keep going there, Matt. Right here. When you take a look at the left-hand side, the unencumbered cash balances of January 1 of 18, and go to the fourth column, unencumbered cash 1231 of 18, you can see that the general fund went from $5,349 to $6,161. That's a good increase to have going into your budget season for 2020. The bond and interest fund is also a fund that receives property tax. It started the year at $217,142, ended at $309. That's another positive impact for your ad valorem tax revenues that you'll be budgeting for in 2020. Community trust fund is fund number eight. We like to keep $2 million in that fund and it performed well during 2018. The enhanced wireless 911, we did have a small reduction there in cash, but we use that for a capital purchase for new equipment over at the communications center. And I think after they get all that put in, they're probably going to invite you to come over and see that new setup. Special traffic way, Fund 32, we started out with $2,670,000. That went down to $1,417,000. That's because we moved all of the money that was in the fund exchange into our GO bond projects, and that's for 8th Street. Then if you want to take a look at, you know, the enterprise funds, the electric fund, number 68, there is a reduction there. Those were some planned expenditures and capital improvements. That cash balance that we ended up with, the $5,877,000, is still better than what we projected to carry over into 2019. Water and Sewer had some good gains in its cash balance, $1,385,000 to $2,491,000. Airport, $1,625,000, and it's at $1,691,000. So everything's very positive there. We were also down at the bottom, Fund 56, our health insurance reserve. We were able to transfer some money from our operating fund into it, so it's now over $2 million in your health insurance reserve. We don't have to use that fund anymore to fund the Recreation Commission's employee benefits because we did set up for them to have their own employee benefits with property tax going into it. Those are the items that I wanted to highlight for you today so that you wouldn't have to wait clear till June when you got the audit to see how you were doing. Is there any questions that I could answer?
Good report. Thank you.
It's very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this report is the format that you receive every month from Melinda, and so continue to give her feedback on what you like to see and what you don't like to see. This has basically been customized over the last three years based on what commissioners have asked for so that we can help you monitor the finances of the city. Certainly is never understated how important or how critical a job Melinda does for us. I know that, you know, a lot of these positive trends that you see in our different funds are largely the result of a couple of things. One, our department heads doing an excellent job of managing their budget. I mean, this notion that spend it or lose it because it's in our government budget doesn't apply with us largely because not all of our departments are actually operated as governments, but many of them are utility funds or enterprise funds and ran as, with more business accounting principles. But, you know, also our general fund department heads understand that efficiency in the way they manage their budget leads to favorable cash balances, which makes your job easier, which makes it easier to come in and replace equipment and if necessary, add manpower when the need is there. And so it's a good working relationship. And then, you know, certainly Melinda's oversight and management of that and helping all of us, department heads, management staff as well, understand sort of the, these trend lines and the importance of growing fund balances and cash on hand and reserves and all those things. It's certainly added up over the years to be a huge positive, huge positive for the city. Next report will be from Fred Jones, Water Resource Manager.
Let me see if this, ah, yes, okay. Just want to give an update on the water consumption for the city in 2018. 2018, our peak daily production was 11 and 1/2 million gallons. That happened on June 15th. That's a little lower than what we've typically seen in other years, so we've seen more big days, but fewer great big days. So that was our peak. As we've talked before, just an opportunity to remind everyone, our water supply is 100% groundwater. The majority of our wells come from the Ogallala Aquifer, and then we do have some wells that come from the Dakota Aquifer. That's a deeper aquifer. And typically, the water quality in the Dakota Aquifer is not as desirable, so we try to limit the usage of that water to the summer months to help meet our demand for irrigation and other high-use needs during the hot months. Last year, we treated approximately 1.1 billion gallons via reverse osmosis. So the city has three wells that are on the, generally west of Main Street in Garden City, and those three wells send water to Wheatlands RO plant on West Kansas Avenue. And so that water is poorer quality and that treatment allows it, improves the quality significantly. And in the wintertime, that makes up the majority of our water supply. So at this time of the year, vast majority of the water used in Garden City is treated via reverse osmosis. This is a little line chart to kind of show what's, how our consumption last year compared to years before. We've seen our overall usage in the winter months is, over the past several years, been creeping a little bit higher. The reason for that is we have more industrial demand, and so that's a year-round demand. And we also have more homes, more businesses, and so that is pushing those winter numbers up a little bit. Our summer numbers really, thanks to several years of good weather, have stayed pretty flat. And so I didn't see anything particularly concerning about our consumption in 2018. 2018 was our first full year of production with the DFA facility online, and so we have that facility, the ethanol plant, and our other industrial customers are having an impact on our water usage, but not a, nothing that is throwing things out of line if we look at the last five years of usage. We did work. I might need the next slide.
You mean to hit it for you?
Yes, please. This chart is showing our, breaking down a little bit more on our daily consumption and showing back to 2012 what our summer usage has looked like on a daily basis in terms of how many million gallons per day we're pumping on average. And you can see, we had a very good summer this last year in Garden. We've got a number of questions. We pump well over 2 billion gallons of water a year, and so the main question is who uses that water? Again, our largest customer is residential. Our industrial usage has grown several percentage points in the last year, again, because we've added more industry in the city. And our commercial usage has grown a little bit as well. Our non-revenue water, which is water that the city uses for parks, fire protection, the Recreation Commission, that water is 10%. And then up at the very top, we've added another category this year that's water sold to other supplies. And so as some water quality issues have arisen in the region, we're getting in a position where we're probably going to be supplying water to Towns River View in the next six months. Actually, the East Garden Village and Prairie Winds manufactured housing districts, those actually have their own separate public water supplies, so the city sells to them as a wholesale customer. And so we just started, we decided we would break that out in the future as a separate category, just for tracking purposes. Again, we don't really have the ability to know, we know how much water we deliver to a customer. We know exactly how much we deliver to a customer. How that gets used in the house, we have to make some assumptions. And so based off of what we're seeing in terms of seasonal differences between water users, we kind of break out the months that are typically irrigating months, which is really about half of the year in Garden City. And then we're looking at our winter usage, our, you know, December, January, February usage, where we know there isn't a lot of outdoor water being consumed. And we kind of come up with a, with a pretty good guess on how much of our water is being used for outdoor irrigation purposes and how much is being used inside the home. And so the number actually improved in 2018. We are figuring that about 44% of the residential water consumed was used for irrigation purposes and 56% was used inside the home. So that's an improvement over what we've seen in prior years.
Fred, before you move on from that statement, would, you think that's a result of, you know, practices or awareness based on what we send out on an annual, or is that just trending with precipitation and temperature?
I think the primary driver is we had a, we had a pretty mild summer and we had a number of timely rains last summer that I think made that situation a lot better. And we also, I don't know if we, we maybe broke 100 degrees, but I think we probably could count it on one hand, how many days we broke that 100-degree mark, which has not been typical for summers for us. Again, our non-revenue, we've, just as a city department, we've been keeping a close eye on our non-revenue water because that is water that is being produced and the rate-paying customers are absorbing those costs for watering parks and public areas. Generally, we've seen some movement downwards, so this chart is maybe laid out a little differently than my others, but 2016 is your bottom cluster of numbers. We're showing parks, zoo, recreation, the big pool, and then all of our other non-revenue uses. We're seeing that those numbers are improving in most categories. I know we made a, we made some, just some minor improvements on our, on our all other category. One of our customers at the wastewater treatment plant, just adjusting a process a little bit and saved quite a bit of water. So we do have good cooperation from the departments on trying to look at their water usage and find ways to reduce those water demands.
Fred, if you, you and I spoke about this just prior to the meeting a little bit, but looking at these, and I know as I was looking at this graph, trying to sort out what this meant or what these trend lines were going towards, and overall, the lessened uses is good, but I think, and while you pointed out, there's context and there's extenuating factors and maybe more detail that can bring, bring some of this data out a little bit more, I do think as an absolute number, it is kind of a nice way to challenge each department and say, okay, you're, you're the biggest line this year. Figure out your internal processes. Let's try and get it down. And maybe as a, as a way of, you know, monitoring that, because it seems as every year, a different department's making inroads in whether it's, it's parks is using more conservation measures than you see, or again, just not needing to irrigate as much because of the weather, I understand, but it is, I think, as absolute numbers, it is sort of useful and interesting to look at how this is dynamic and changing.
Thank you.
And hopefully useful to incentivize departments to look at their practices.
Looks like parks have probably saved the most with their different practices of drip and irrigation.
So which, which one is, is the cemetery located in one of these or is it?
That would be in the all other category.
Okay.
Yeah. Cemetery is, is working on some projects that are going to hopefully be an improvement on water consumption, or at least use the water better. And one of the things we're looking at at the cemetery is, we have a, we actually have a water right at the cemetery that we're considering developing as part of an irrigation improvement to the cemetery to reduce the amount of potable water that's used in irrigation up there. So again, that should help with that non-revenue water side and help conserve some potable water.
Is this just a potable water report?
This is all just potable. This doesn't include the golf course.
So the golf course isn't on here?
For the city, we have 12 primary water rights files. Face value of these files are a little over 9 and 1/2 million, 9 and 1/2,000 acre feet, which each acre foot is 325,000-plus gallons. And so that equates to 3.1 billion gallons of water that the city's authorized to pump in a year. This limitation is set by the Division of Water Resources. It was set a number of years ago, and they have, they have set a limitation of 7,010 acre feet for the city. So when we're combining all these water rights, we get some flexibility from the Department of Water Resources to use all these wells in different places. So typically, if you, if a farmer was farming a field, he would have an irrigation well pretty close to the vicinity of that field that he would be irrigating, and he would be using it in a pretty close proximity. They call that place of use. For a city, that isn't always as convenient because you, you have all the other things the city has, you know, schools and, and homes and streets and parks and all these things. And so our water supply is, majority of that comes from the Sanddills area, and we do have some wells in town, but we have flexibility to use that water anywhere in the city of Garden City. So as a result of that flexibility, even though face value, we have 9 and 1/2,000 acre feet of water, DWR sets a limitation as to what's reasonable, and the purpose of that is to keep cities from speculating on water that they may not need, which is not good for the rural economy to have that kind of activity going on. And so the limitation set by DWR for the city is 7,010 acre feet, which is about 2.3 billion gallons per year. And as the city grows, the Division of Water Resources understands that the requirements for water will increase as well, but we really have to hit that threshold, that 7,010 acre-foot threshold, and that starts, you know, some other things into motion where the city would start developing some other rights that we have in our portfolio that aren't currently developed for municipal rights. So we live in an area where if we're not pumping the water right, it's not a use it or lose it situation anymore. That has changed a number of years ago. And so as the city has obtained some property, Garden City, or the Garden City Industrial Park property on Farmland Road had some water rights associated with it, the location where the DFA plant is located had some water rights associated with it. And so there are several of these water rights that are out there that are available for development, and the reason we're not developing them is because we have to hit that limitation. Otherwise, it just gets lumped in with 7,010 acre feet. We don't really want to give up that face value. So this, this chart is just showing generally over the past several years, how, what percentage we're getting to that limit. And we actually, that growth hasn't really been all that significant in terms of how close we are to that. In 2011, we used 88.2%. That was kind of in the midst of the last drought. In 2012, we got up into the 90% range of that limit. But in 2018, we used 84%. In 2017, we used 81%. So we still have some room in there to operate before we would be in a position where we need to go develop more water at this time. Again, this is kind of a Again, this is kind of a, another chart has shown where we think we'll be as the as the years go on. This is if everything remains the same level of growth and consumption that we've seen over the past several years. This chart was prepared by Burns and McDonnell as part of their water reuse feasibility study. But this is showing, the red line showing our pumping pumping limit of seven thousand ten acre feet, and then generally where they anticipate we'll be hitting, and what categories of water usage make up that overall use. This is last year's seasonal drought outlook. I just want to share some of this, that is kind of as a forecasting what to expect. This is what they're showing this year. So that's generally looks a lot more promising than where we were at this time last year. You know, if we go a month or two without any precipitation, we'll start looking like that map again really quickly. So it's it's a fickle indicator, but for right now, the state is completely out of drought, and we've had really a pretty wet wet winter, probably one of the wet winters we've had in a number of years. We'll be preparing to send out another round of customer water use reports. So we are, this is the old version that you've seen. You'll see some changes to this year's report. We're going to be putting some information in, giving them an idea of not only where they sit in terms of the neighborhood component, how we looked at that last year, but also looking at an overall usage component where we're looking at water consumption based off of square feet of their place of usage. So their their lot, where their house is, is going to be their place of use. Thanks to our robust GIS system, we can calculate how many square feet that is, and we can come up with an idea of of how how efficiently we're using water to give some more information to our customers. So that, as we said, we we want to keep that report changing, giving new information to our customers about their own water use. It helps us save the resource, and it also helps our customers conserve some money if they have an interest in doing that. The other thing we've started doing, and I have this year's audit to our Public Utilities Director for him to review it, we've started doing a AWWA standard water audit. It's a best practice method adopted in two thousand and three by AWWA, and it looks a lot more in-depth to our billing practices and our metrology practices, how we manage our meters in the field. And it makes some assumptions based off how robust our metering capability is as to what loss is attributable to errors in in pumping and litters, what percentage of errors in delivery to customers. All of our meters are are very recent. We have an AMI system for our meter reading, so we really have a top-notch metering system in Garden City, and our water loss for this year's report to the state is right around two percent. So if you think of the quantity of water we're pumping, we're retaining ninety-eight percent of that water to be used by customers. But this is a good way to look at it, to make sure that we're doing all the best practices and how we're managing the management of the resources, and it also allows us to to attach some dollar values to what's lost, and we're going to be using that in 2018 to internally and then also to communicate with the community about the water re, the water resource. So anyhow, we'll we'll present that to you when we, when everyone has had an opportunity to review it and sign off on it, we'll make sure to share that information with the commission as well. That's all I have for this.
Well, I wanted to say thank you for the report. It was extremely interesting. So I know you talked a little bit about conservation efforts at the cemetery. Are there any other big pushes other than not filling the big pool? Jennifer's already said, yes, we're going to fill it this year's. But are there any other conservation efforts that you are doing throughout the city? I think you've done some really great projects, I'm just curious.
We don't have anything formally developed yet, and I think the the main thing we would want, we have discussed and are considering is doing some pilot projects with customers to do smart metering systems on residential properties. I do have a little bit of grant money that's been made available to us by the Kansas Water Office, and so we're wanting to take this year's data as we get that usage per square foot, and we'll and we'll use that information to try and develop a proposal that we may be able to do some some metering project, or some smart irrigation projects, and then we can kind of track how those work, you know, what the what the payback is. The idea would be to demonstrate to customers what, you know, what they could see in potential savings and how that would offset the cost of of the equipment, which is, which is getting more and more affordable all the time. So that's one thing we're thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Hey, Fred, one question on, or maybe a, maybe a different aspect of of your job. One of its quantity issues, and that's certainly what this report revolves around, the other side is quality issues. And I know you do kind of quality reports on an annual basis with respect to the city's water supply, but can you speak to some of the regional or even interstate discussions going on as they relate to water quality? Just so the commission's aware of.
Yeah.
Things that may be coming down the track.
So for Garden City, we've been fortunate. We don't have any violations of water quality in our supply around us, and more concerning in the in the Arkansas River Corridor, the biggest water quality issue that we're seeing is the migration of radionuclides, so radioactive material. It's naturally occurring, there's no, there's no nefarious dump of of nuclear arsenals or anything into the Arkansas River, but the the geology in the area and some of the practices upstream regarding flood irrigation and the use of river water for that are causing issues in the river as it gets down into the Garden City, really anywhere past the state line, are causing a lot of issues with water quality. And so we've worked on this, I worked on this a lot when I was with the city of Lakin. They had to do quite a bit of work to address water quality. One of the reasons we're extending water out to the Towns River View development is because of radionuclides in their system. And so we are visiting with state officials, Kansas Water Office, the GMD is doing a lot of work to to raise awareness of of water quality issues in the Arkansas River Basin. The reason that's important to to the city of Garden City and anyone that's using water around here is, as water has been consumed out here, the the river, a lot of the river flow historically was provided through bank recharge, so the the moisture in the soil, runoff, things like that, would recharge the river. As the aquifer is lowered, instead of a a resource that's providing water to the river, the river is recharging the aquifer. And so the concern is a lot of lower quality water going into the aquifer over a period of years could cause some some water quality issues for Garden City and frankly, any other community along the river that that has any kind of measurable flow. So that's something we're keeping an eye on. You know, all the issues are treatable, that's not a concern, the the technology to remove those contaminants for the water is there. The issue is removing those contaminants costs water, because there's a, there's a cost to treating water in terms of you don't get a hundred percent output from a plant. The other issue is the cost to customers, especially vulnerable customers who are on limited income, you know, increasing water rate for treatment is, can be pretty significant just due to the the amount of energy and and infrastructure required to do it.
But you can blend that, I mean, it's, you don't need to treat a hundred percent of it.
No, you don't, no, and you wouldn't treat a hundred percent of it, just because the chemistry would not.
Yeah.
Would not be a good thing, but it it would be blended, but it would still require a lot of infrastructure to do that for a system the size of Garden City.
Fred, with the flow of water in the river nowadays, over the last few months, of course, a lot of that has gone down because it's not even going to Pierceville. Is that speeding up the contamination to the aquifer a little bit, that we're going to face this problem probably sooner than later?
You know, everything has been pretty steady. I haven't seen those numbers causing issues, and generally, what we've seen is it has, south of the river in the Sandhills area, it hasn't had much of an impact on those areas. North of the river, the water quality is not, not nearly as good as it as it could be. Just the geology of how how it makes it down, so.
Thanks, Fred.
Good report.
Another good report, and we appreciate Fred's work. He's, we made a change a few years back to have a department director over our water resource that would not only manage the, manage operations and oversee operations, but would also keep the water discussion at the forefront for residents of Garden City and to keep Garden City at the forefront of the discussion on a statewide and regional basis, and Fred's done done a great job of doing that. Other reports, I believe that's the last of the presentations, right?
I did have a question on the building reports, if that's okay. And this is just to kind of put things in perspective, because as I look at the number of permits that have been issued, and we've been down the last couple of years, I know it's just the first month of 2019, but based on the number of RHIDs that we've approved and what can we expect coming down the pike, do you have an expectation that we're going to see a rush in permits based on that build-out time here in the next year, or can you kind of put that in perspective for me, please?
Yeah, actually, the, with those, those are all balanced out over a pro forma timeframe, and so they will be starting here very soon, because most of our RHIDs will be coming this year and into, through this year and into the next year for those. They will, they have been a significant impact to the number of building permits. However, our total number of building permits also reflects also the minor permits that are occurring in people's homes doing remodels, minor remodels, and businesses doing remodels and and things like that. So part of that is reflective upon that as well. So it can be any combination that will impact our 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 flow of of building permits as they come in.
I did also want to pass on a compliment about several people who have been working with your department lately, and they've just, it's really, you've been able to shepherd them through the process and the guidance they've received, and all kinds of questions that they have that they didn't know they should have had, and so I just wanted to pass along some compliments and say it's, it's really, the process you're using down there's really been helpful to our residents, so I just wanted to say thank you and to your staff for the great work you're doing.
Thank you, I've got a great staff.
Are there questions on any of the, any of the reports? Please reach out to those departments if you see something, reading through those anytime, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer those questions for you. You'll see the meetings of note under Section Eight. The, yeah, just this underlined what was mentioned this morning. On February twenty-sixth, the annual joint meeting of the Horse Thief Reservoir Board and the Pawnee Watershed District occurs. That is at Horse Thief Reservoir, so don't show up here for that meeting, it will be locked. February twenty-seventh then is the board meeting for the Development Corporation. Our retreat is in March together on the sixth, and that'll be at the Fennup Center. You got Downtown Vision's annual meeting as well, you all are invited to that. Legislative coffees have been, coffees have been well attended, so if you haven't made one of those, I would encourage you to, but well attended by the public and well attended by legislators. There's been some sort of area, area legislators showing up a little more frequently than they used to in the past. Any of the, I don't think any of those require RSVPs, but if they do, get with Selin. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, that would be twenty-four seventy-seven dash two thousand nineteen A.
May I make a motion that we approve appropriation ordinance number two four seven seven dash two one nine A?
I'll second.
It's been moved and signed that we approve appropriation ordinance two four seven seven dash two thousand nineteen A. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
Item ten A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the resolution to establish a public hearing date of April second, two thousand nineteen at one thirty for the creation of a community improvement district for Garden City Plaza LLC. This, if approved, it would be Resolution twenty-seven ninety-three dash two thousand nineteen, and I believe we have representatives from the project here to speak to you.
Mayor and commissioners, as Matt has said, we're bringing before the resolution to establish a public hearing. In your last meeting, you did accept the petition request from the Garden City Plaza to create a community improvement district. This resolution will set the public hearing for the first meeting in April, April second, two thousand nineteen at one thirty PM. Just as a little refresher background to the CID district that we are proposing, this will be at approximately twenty-two hundred Kansas Avenue, currently where the J.C. Pennies, the Buckle, and Trade Home Shoes is located, just to name a few of those retail businesses. They are requesting the CID to make improvements such as, but not limited to, the facade, canopies, paving, and sidewalks. At the time of the public hearing, you will have a market feasibility analysis to review as part of that agenda packet. Your alternatives before you today are, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution, or three, the governing body may defer action until a later date. Staff recommends alternative number one. There are no fiscal obligations from the city under the CID program.
So Melissa, at what point do they determine how much of this, how much CID they're going to ask for? Is it up to one percent they can ask for, or?
In the petition request, they did request a one percent, they've estimated, and so I think that turns out to be about one point six million they'll want to recapture over the life of the CID.
Thank you.
Do the owners want to, do you have anything to say, or?
I come in peace. I married a girl from Tribune. Well, we're excited to be.
Come on up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, state your name and.
Public speaking is not my favorite. My name is Bob Selecta, I'm from Omaha, Nebraska. I represent the owners of Garden City Plaza LLC, along with my counsel back there, Rick Yaxel. Rick is from Liberal, so he's much closer than I. We're excited to put before you our plan. We've been working on something for about eighteen months now, and we've started and had to reshuffle the deck and started and have to reshuffle the deck, and so we're excited to bring before you and get for, in front of you those things you would need to see that this is a viable request for a valuable piece of property in this community, and certainly a valuable piece of property for us.
Is there any plans to do something with the parking lot?
Yes, yes.
Is that part of it, too?
That's one of the things, I think Melissa just also mentioned, that that's on our checklist. It's, it's kind of like matching a bunch of things right now as we shuffle the deck and put this all together, but, you know, that's definitely one of the things on our to-do list.
What is the occupancy out there right now? Is it full?
It is not full. As a matter of fact, I was disappointed to see that every Paila Shoes in the United States will close very shortly. And I think that's one of the key focuses that we have, I think we have four vacancies right now. Of those four vacancies, one was lost to the new center that was built, and I think it lasted about two years, and then it filed bankruptcy and it no longer exists. The other three that were in our center, one of them had two stores and combined, and expanded that one store, so it's a little bit bigger, but less than the two that were there. And the other two no longer exist on the planet Earth, and I think that's very much a sign of our times right now. And so we consider. And so we consider this type of renovation, facelift, if you will, very important to the decision-making process for a lot of those tenants. They're all national tenants, for the most part, and I think with very few exceptions. And a lot of times, those folks sit in a boardroom, and when they make financial decisions, you know, they look at places and volumes and, and we want, we want to have everything on our side of the ledger, if you will, that would keep them from making a negative reaction to a store in Garden City. We want to, we want to make the center as positive experience for them and the consumer as we can.
Sure. Are you in active talks, I assume you are, active talks trying to fill those vacancies? Are there any leads on those?
Oh, absolutely. All the time.
All the time.
All the time. As a matter of fact, I showed two spaces this morning and have sent out two proposals back at the hotel before I came here.
Very good. Thank you.
I appreciate your willingness to bring, I mean, to improve a property and also just to do the facelift, because I think that really makes an impact overall on Garden City and on that side of town. I think it's really an opportunity. So I appreciate you putting together the work, even like you said, you had to shuffle many times. So you did great public speaking, so that's awesome.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2793-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2793 to set up a public hearing on April 2nd, 2019 at 1:30 in regards to the Community Development District for Garden City Plaza LLC. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to review and approve a resolution regarding the city's responding to a financial emergency plan. If approved, this would be Resolution 2794-2019. Melinda?
Annually, you're asked to review the financial indicators for the city of Garden City each year. And so we have five indicators that we have provided to you that are in our policy with the answers to those, to those indicators. The first one is revenues are less than budgeted, such that the city's projected budgeted revenues are no longer anticipated to cover projected expenses. The revenues, so the city's response is that the revenues in the general fund, airport, bonded interest, all exceeded budgeted amounts. The property tax and motor vehicle tax collections in these funds showed no delinquent collections. In the city's enterprise funds, with the exception of the golf course, all were higher than projected. The cash carryover in the golf course fund balanced out its difference. The second indicator is revenues fall below the performance goal as identified in the fund balance guideline. If the fund balance has not yet met the performance goal, the, an emergency would be defined as a decrease in the reserve from the previous year if the spend down of the fund was not planned or budgeted. This is a good response here. The general fund did very good. Its cash balance ended up at 6,163,724. If you look at the fund balance policy for the general fund, it states that it is to maintain 15% of the general fund annual operating budget. That number is 3,704.
Yeah.
The carryover cash into 2019, that $6 million number exceeded what we thought we would carry over by 1,244,824. The community trust fund is also identified in this policy to maintain a minimum fund balance of 2 million. Its balance at the end of 2018 was 2,086,913. The third indicator in the policy is the city is unable to reduce expenditures in the amount required to structurally balance the budget. The city has measures in place should this situation occur. It would involve the city manager working with department heads to resolve budgeted expenditures that can be reduced. The fourth item is an unforeseen extreme event requiring significant expenditures for repair or remediation that exceed 20% of the fund's budget. And the answer to that is fortunately, we did not experience an event like that in 2018. The last indicator is a loss of a primary employer in the city, resulting in 2% or more increase in the city's unemployment rate, or a projected 10% drop in city valuation, or a 10% drop in population. So the 10 largest employers in Finney County, as noted, as noted in the city's CAFR, have shown no indication of a slowdown in the economy. The unemployment rate for December 2018 is at 2.3% compared to 2.2 in 2017. The city does not anticipate a drop in valuation in 2019, which is reflected in the building permits. And for the last item here, for January 1, 2019, the calculation of the city's population by the Neighborhood and Development Services Department, using the U.S. Census Bureau, accepted assumption of 2.88 persons per residential utility meter results in the population being 31,275. This is a decrease over last year of 18 people. With this information, the staff has determined that a financial emergency does not exist, and your alternatives are to approve the resolution as attached or for the city to provide further information.
I move that we approve Resolution 2794-2019.
I happily second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2794-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda.
Thank you, Melinda. The next item, the item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution that would abate a violation at 408 North 5th Street. If approved, it would be Resolution 2795-2019. Caleb?
Yes, this is your typical resolution in regards to an environmental nuisance at 408 North 5th Street. Your item's located on the porch.
Again, no feedback from, once we sent the letter, you haven't heard back from the resident at all, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have questions if I could ask on this. I went by there and I looked at it, and, and I, this is a different part of town. Different, different values, different ways of life and how they treat property and stuff. I looked at this as, as the chair being a, a chair for an office, which I didn't see anything wrong with that. I mean, a chair's a chair. What's the difference between that and another chair sitting on the front porch if it's in good condition? I had, maybe had trouble with the, the entertainment system. It may, at least the big counter there may be out of place. The other thing that you list there is the stationary bike. What would you do if it was a regular bike? You know, it's different priorities in a different area of town. I can't really go along with those two items. I can go along with the, the idea of let's move the entertainment center or get rid of it.
It's important to note on these, as we go up, as, if, if a nuisance is approved, if you proceed with this resolution, when it comes to the time for us to go and clean up the property, we are actually be able to, at that time, assess them by going on the property up close and seeing whether it is or isn't. There are some things that may pass in this resolution that we list because we can only see them from the public right of way, or as we walk up and knock on the door, that we may or may not agree with either as it comes forward. But those are the things that we take into consideration when we go to the, each of those properties. Some of those items may not be removed or taken because, you're right, it may not be necessarily a item that is, would be, would fall under that category. But we do take that into consideration when we do that. Because at this point, we haven't gone onto the property to inspect it. All it is is visual from the right of way, or from the perspective of knocking on the front door.
But the complaint itself came in and probably addressed those items there as being part of it.
Things listed on the porch.
So the letter that we sent to them would indicate these things as being violations and a nuisance, but in fact, may not be.
That's correct.
So when you, when, I, I hope that the owner understands, or the people that live there at least, understand that they can come and talk to you and challenge that chair being as, as good as any other lawn chair you may find or buy to put up there.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that would be my only point. I think we have to give some consideration and, and think about what we're doing there.
And we do our very best, and when people contact us to do that very thing. And, and normally, when it comes to particularly furniture on, on outdoors, is, is usually when it comes to this final inspection at the time that their, their timeline is up, we'll inspect the furniture closely to see, because if it is intended for outdoor use, there's a difference if it was intended for outdoor or indoor use as well by the manufacturer on those. And so we take into consideration all those things, and usually, hopefully, that homeowner is there when we go by to take care of the nuisance if it leads to that.
So Caleb, did this come from a, from a complaint, a neighbor complaint, or did this come from just the department for, as they drive through?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have asked it earlier, but.
My question is just about the specificity of the code. So I think that's really what goes to this, because there, there probably does need to be specific language, and if you could, if you want to cite the code for us and remind us, you know, is there a specific code violation about indoor versus outdoor use type furniture? Because I, I mean, a bike is not a bike. You know, a stationary bike is, is not intended for outdoor use. And then we also talk about the safety things, and we talked about that with the last resolution during the last meeting when there was a car up on blocks and, and children running to play with things and those kind of things. And so I, I just wonder about the specificity of the language and if it's something we need to kind of shore up a little bit.
It, it's pretty broad, and it's intended to do so, but to cover the, the nuisance complaints that we may receive from neighbors or citizens of the community. And so it's pretty broad, but at, at the time we go, we look at it comparatively to the neighborhood, of course, that it's located in. Because there are certain neighborhoods that, in one neighborhood, this may be completely unacceptable, whereas in another neighborhood, it may be perfectly acceptable, just, just like Commissioner Dale has suggested, that there are certain areas that there's a little bit more leniency on, on, on certain things that are there on their property and others that are not so much. And that's how most of the complaints we receive from neighbors, unfortunately, or citizens who drive by the area is based on their, and we have to take that into consideration each case that we bring before you. And that's what we do. We haven't heard from any of these individuals that are on this list, so we don't know any more detail than what we have. But if they were to contact us, those would be some of the exact same questions we would ask them, is what was, you know, is it just sitting out there and you were planning on moving? Maybe they, they, they got distracted by a family accident or something, and they couldn't finish what they were doing, or they're rearranging their home, whatever. We, we want to work with every citizen to make sure we, we take into consideration our certain.
So until you have this in place, you don't go on the property specifically to ask those questions?
Yeah, when we, we'll go on and knock on the door. If someone is home, we can go and knock on the door. But there are, there are laws that protect citizens on their property. When we walk up to the door, we can visually see anything anyone else would see, and maybe Randy can say it better than I am saying it, but you, we can't go onto their property specifically and go anywhere besides to their front door to let them notify of what was visually seen from the public right of way, or is, is what we can notice them up in without going up any closer or having a warrant, which would be required in certain cases if you were going to go beyond that. That's what this resolution does, is this gives us, if they don't take any action or can't provide information otherwise for us to go on to the property.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2795-2013, reference nuisance at 408 North 5th Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2795-2019, reference to 408 North 5th. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution that would abate a violation at 1608 North 7th. If approved, it would be Resolution 2796-2019.
And you have, this is another environmental nuisance for 1608 North 7th Street. For items shown in the picture and listed on the order, which is, includes the tire and branches.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution number 2796-2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2796-2019, reference to 1608 North 7th. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution which would abate a nuisance at 401 Hudson. If approved, it would be 2797-2016.
And again, you have, this is a environmental nuisance for 401 Hudson Street for Stumps Lins, weathered a lot of different materials. And as you can see, as you, as you see, all of these environmental nuisances come for you, each of them are very different, depending on the circumstances, but they all go through the same process as outlined by the code, so.
Yeah, I move that we approve Resolution 2797-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2797-2019, 401 Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution which would abate a motor vehicle nuisance violation at 1602 North 8th Street. If approved, it would be Resolution 2798-2019.
And this is a motor vehicle nuisance at 1602 North 8th Street.
They just have flat tires, but they've got a tag.
There is a tag, and, yeah, there are parts, pieces, and I don't believe the tag, the tag may or be, may or may not be current.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2798-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2798-2019, in reference to 1602 North 8th Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Caleb. Item 12A, commissioners, this is the governing body's consideration and acceptance of the resignation from the governing body of Commissioner Melvindale. At your February 5th meeting, where Frank Hauser read the letter of resignation from Commissioner Dale, and his request was that that would take place at the conclusion of this meeting. Applicable local codes and state law indicate that the city commission must actually take formal action accepting that, which we didn't do at the last meeting, so we ask you to do that this meeting. So your alternatives are to accept Melvindale's resignation, or chain yourself to his chair and refuse that he leave. Staff recommends accepting the resignation from the city commission.
Mr. Mayor, it's with heavy heart that I make a motion that we accept Melvindale's resignation from the city commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept Mayor, I mean, Commissioner Melvindale's resignation from the city commission. Any further discussion?
No.
Well, that's a way to do that.
He's just been buzzed, calling the police.
That's right.
Sorry. I can't turn that off. It's a medical monitor, so.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Happy to offer some, you know, laughter in the middle of that sad. Happy to offer some, you know, laughter in the middle of that sad.
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah.
We need a little laughter once in a while.
Commissioner and Dale and I have a, a history together as far as we both won and lost the same election.
A couple times over.
It's over, so I, I, I'm eternally tied to Commissioner Dale, but it's been an honor to serve with him, and I was anticipating for four years, and, and I'm sad it won't be that way, but I'm excited about your future. I spoke with your wife, and it sounds like you've got some really great plans coming up. And so it's, we'll really miss you here, here, and I appreciate all your wisdom and your efforts for us here, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Troy. Let's move on.
To the next.
Well.
I'm gonna step out on this one.
Okay, that sounds good.
You can freely discuss what you need to, and.
All right.
12B, the governing body has asked to consider and discuss the process by which it wishes to fill the city commission seat, which will be vacated by Commissioner Dale's resignation. Attached were applicable state laws and codes that direct the process by which a vacancy on the city commission is filled. In short, there isn't much direction, other than that the appointment will be made by a majority vote of the remaining commissioners. Most recent similar circumstances have allowed for a period of time for citizens to submit an expression of interest in the form of a letter. In one instance, the commission conducted interviews during a pre-meeting. In another instance, in a, in another instance, commissioners offered interested candidates a moment to speak in advance of the vote if they were in attendance and desired to provide a supplement to what they had already offered in writing. The only requirement of the commission is that they appoint a qualified electorate. The Kansas Constitution defines a qualified electorate as someone eighteen years of age or older who resides in the voting area in which he or she seeks to vote. To be eligible or to be appointed to the, the City of Garden City Kansas City Commission, a person must be eighteen years of age or older, live in the corporate limits of the city, and be registered to vote. The Attorney General has opined that if someone is not registered to vote, he or she cannot fill a vacancy for an elected municipal position. The appointed commissioner will serve until January 2020. The position of Commissioner Dale was to run until 2022. However, state law does require the seat to go before the voters at the next election. As a result, there will be four contested city commission spots in the November 2019 election. So your alternatives are, by motion, second and majority vote of the remaining four commissioners, a new members, you select a new member. This could be done at the March 5th, 2019 meeting, with no additional work requested of staff. Another alternative could be that the staff, you ask the staff to solicit expressions of interest for the vacant city commission seat and organize those for consideration at the March 5th, 2019 meeting. Candidates would be provided the opportunity to speak if they wish. At the time, the business item of selecting a new commissioner is taken up by the governing body. Three, you could ask staff to solicit expressions of interest for the vacant city commission seat and organize interviews during the pre-meeting session on March 19th. During the regular meeting, the governing body would have a business item where they could consider selecting a new commissioner. And really, any variation of any of those, we were just trying to show the scope or breadth of how, how many factors you could use or, or steps you could put into making a selection, or on the other extreme, quite literally placing an item on the agenda where we just get a motion, a second, a vote, and we keep going until we have a commissioner. So your, your choice. And we will leave it, Mayor, to you to lead a discussion on this. The city attorney is available to answer any questions you have with respect to process.
I'd just like to make a comment. When I, I got on the commission, I took Ronaldo Mesa's position for the rest of his term. And basically, at that time, I just submitted a letter to the, to the commission that I was interested in that, and gave my qualifications, and they reviewed it, and, and that was, and then they voted on it at their meeting. So that's what I would suggest. I guess it would be alternative number two. And that way, we find out if anybody's interested, they submit their, we have a time to review it before the meeting. And this is a little quick, but we probably need to, to select someone to fill this vacancy as soon as we can. We're gonna be into budget and all that.
Well, I would feel also comfortable giving people an opportunity to speak. I mean, a written communication is, that's one aspect of someone, but I think that if you allow them a time either to speak at a commission meeting or at a pre-meeting, I think that would also be, because I would like, you know, to have some input from our residents, and I'm, I'm not saying that we don't have the ultimate decision, which, I mean, is a big decision, but I would like to have some input from our residents, too. So if there was a way to gather some input after they not only submit a letter, if those could be made public, and then also maybe a chance to speak out loud.
That's what number two says.
Well, I think, you know, we're trying to talk about.
Were you looking at number three?
I guess I was looking at number three.
I, I agree with, with you on that point. I think also, there's, there is a commitment here, and I, I think that anyone to be considered for this position, you know, goes through the process of, yes, submitting written, you know, written qualifications and a letter. I think that's very appropriate, and have time for us to review that. And then I, I'd like to see an invitation to, maybe even the pre-meeting, as that's a little bit less formal.
Right.
Allows a little bit more time. It's still a public meeting. We could have a more discussion. Maybe it's not a formal interview. We could decide how we want to structure that, whether it's private time or it's a group discussion. But I agree, I think there should be public input in this. But then I also think I want to see real commitment and get an opportunity to talk with, with a person and, and, you know, see how, how things go in a group setting.
Quick question to legal counsel. Just when I was reading through these, do we have to fill the vacant seat by the March 5th? Because it does, no, we don't? Okay. That was, that was my question, because if by, if we go by number three, that pushes it back to then the March 19th. So I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to fill it by the March 5th meeting, so.
I think that's a reasonable time period. I mean, we don't want this to go on too long.
Yeah, the March 19th.
No, I understand. I just wanted to make sure if we, I know the statute's very vague on, I mean, but I just wanted to make sure by your, by legal counsel that if we do go by number three, that we can't, you know, we don't have to have a deadline or anything to fill this. I know, we don't want to drag it out or anything, but.
Yeah.
We could do number three with a, also, I think we ought to add, it needs to be a written letter and qualifications submitted, as well as speaking then at a pre-meeting on March 19th, and then we could vote.
I think that was kind of the direction, if you kind of read it, right? Was that kind of?
Well, it doesn't really.
Yeah, so I guess my, my only question is for, if you guys are talking about number three, clarifying that you want staff to actually solicit those that are interested, have them do letters and qualifications, and then you want to require them, if they're interested, to come to the pre-meeting. Now, a question on this.
I don't think require. I think that's the opportunity if they want to speak.
That's what I need clarification on. Do you want them, if they submitted a expression of interest, because that's going to matter to them if we tell them it's optional, but the commission, if you guys expect, I need to understand your, your thinking thought process.
I think that would be optional. If they don't want to speak, they don't have to.
They don't have to come.
But then how do you really evaluate someone?
Well, you evaluate their written.
Well, that's, then, see, that to me is one of those. The hard thing is, is I know that a lot of people haven't made this timeframe in their day, but March 19th gives you plenty of time.
Right.
I mean, if you're gonna serve on the commission, you're gonna have to make this time of day available for you, so.
Or do we set an, an evening meeting to accomplish this? Because I do think one of the shortcomings of the timing of our meetings, and maybe I've made this point multiple times before, but it excludes people that have day jobs, people who aren't, you know, there, there are drawbacks to having midday meetings. That being said, that's, that's the custom now. That's what we have set. But if, if this is someone who may be looking to, you know, make adjustments to their schedule if they were to come on the commission, but aren't able to do it in this shorter timeframe, maybe we do set it for an evening, you know, interview session, public.
Monday before, like the 18th?
Yeah, public meeting to allow for some of those folks who maybe aren't able to just take off during that, a day, a lot of.
Well, but this, I think we're giving them plenty ample time. If we're, if we're asking them to come to the March 19th meeting, that should give that individual, if they're really willing to serve and be on, and sit, sit on the commission, I think that should give them ample enough time to, to make arrangements to.
Get off.
To be here, if that's, if that's their desire.
I mean, I guess I would highly encourage them to be here, but I, you know, like, as, as Mayor Finkhauser, I mean, I don't think you can require it, but I do think it's another aspect of helping with that decision-making. I would strongly suggest that they be here in person at that pre-meeting if we, you know, choose to do that. I mean, an evening meeting, I'm also up, up for also, but.
Okay, and then also to clarify, number three actually says that we would organize interviews. Typically, interviews are one-on-one interviews. And so if you're making it optional, then that's going to be a little bit more difficult to set. Exact interviews, you're gonna basically be having a discussion with if there's one person interested, or if there's ten people interested. And so just some clarification on that for staff.
I think we're thinking just meet at the pre-meeting.
Chance to speak.
And speak.
I, I wasn't thinking about an interview process, so.
Okay.
I guess I was excluding that part.
Unless, were you thinking an interview process?
No, I, I don't think it needs to be a formal interview. I would agree. We could just have a discussion, but I'd like for it to be an open.
Right.
Yeah, an open format.
So I think the letters are important. I mean, the letter and, and qualifications, and then the opportunity to be able to speak. As far as a formal interview, no, and then this would happen on March 19th.
Okay.
At a pre-meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Are we going to solicit interest? I think I am interested in that, because I think it needs to be.
Well, probably through the meeting, as we're discussing it right now.
Would you like to give suggestions? That's what I'm wondering. I mean, I think we use all of our applicable. We will. Outreach sources, whether that be, yeah, print media, social media, and certainly different languages. We need to try and, and reach out to community partners, too, whether that be, you know, the chamber, or the, any, you know, the community partners to try and get the word out, so we get the broadest coverage as we would with a general election. Yeah, we'll make sure that we do that and, and try and solicit as much as possible. We usually try and do at least in two languages, so.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that staff solicits expressions of interest for the vacant city commission seat and organizes interviews during the pre-mating session on March 19th, 2019. During the regular meeting, the governing body would have business item where we could consider selecting the new commissioner.
And the written?
Along with a written letter and qualifications.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. And I think you're the only one that could have summarized all of that into one concise motion.
He read it.
You're welcome. I just read it and then added.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, I'll run it, number three, which I won't read again, but.
You could have somebody repeat it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Got that?
Got it.
All right.
Also note the signal.
You'll send out the signal.
We are ready for C.
Item 12A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the removal of the perimeter fence on Third Street at Valley View Cemetery. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. In 2018, the city began a sidewalk project at Valley View Cemetery along Third Street. In the process, the chain link fence along the northern half of Third Street was evaluated. Staff removed the fence because it was no longer visibly pleasing and is leaning toward Third Street and had areas where the mesh was damaged. It is not uncommon for a municipality to remove a perimeter fencing. The city of Salina is an example of a municipality that removed their perimeter fence from their cemetery. Staff made contact with Salina's cemetery staff and asked about vandalism. Salina has had no issues with vandalism since removing the perimeter fence. Vandalism is a valid concern with removing the perimeter fence. However, the fence has been down at the north end of the cemetery for nearly one year, and the entry gates at the cemetery have not been closed at night for several years. The cemetery has not had vandalism reports during this time. As a result of removing the fence, the view into the northern half of the cemetery is now aesthetically pleasing, and maintenance crews no longer trim on both sides of the fence. They trim only along the sidewalk. Staff sought public input during the October Park and Tree Board meeting. A quorum of four on a seven-person board voted unanimously to remove the perimeter fence from the north end of Valley View Cemetery to Bellevue. Staff also presented the idea of removing or replacing the fence at the January 10, 2019 CIP meeting. The options presented to the committee were as follows: Remove the perimeter fence on Third Street at city labor cost, two; replace chain link fence that was removed on the northern half of the cemetery, estimated at $15,000; or three, replace the entire perimeter fence with a four-foot powder-coated iron fence, estimated at $200,000. A quick pause. None of this is budgeted right now, so we don't have budgets for this. I was just bringing that forward as we go on. There were 27 attendees at the CIP meeting who voted for the cemetery perimeter fence project. The voting tally is as follows: Replace/Remove the chain link fence from the north end of the cemetery, there were four votes. Replace the entire perimeter fence with a four-foot powder-coated iron fence, three votes. Remove the chain link fence along Third Street, 20 votes. At this time, staff is not pursuing removal of the fence along the north end of the cemetery. Leaving, leaving the fence will protect the cemetery from the debris and tumbleweeds, which may blow in from the north due to the farming and/or future development. At this time, staff is not requesting removal of the Bellevue fence until a concrete path is built along the Bellevue perimeter, which we're looking at in the future. So, alternative one, remove the chain link fence along Third Street at Valley View Cemetery. Alternative two, replace the chain link fence at the north end of Valley View Cemetery. Or three, replace the entire perimeter fence at Valley View Cemetery with a four-inch powder-coated iron fence. Staff and the Park and Tree Board recommend alternative one to remove the chain link fence along Third Street at Valley View Cemetery. And with this rec, alternative one recommendation, the, the cost of doing that would just be absorbed within the labor of the cemetery staff. Questions?
Okay, any questions from Commissioners?
No, I, I mean, I appreciate, I think the best, you know, the best guard against vandalism is have people on that sidewalk. So I mean, I, I really, it looks tons better, and I think we have a beautiful cemetery, and it's a wonderful place to walk, and so. Yeah, I would, I would move that we remove the chain link fence along Third Street at Valley View Cemetery.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we remove the fence along Third Street at Valley View Cemetery. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Commissioners, item, item D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Fannie County Transit Advisory Committee. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The Transit Advisory Committee has one vacant position, which is appointed by the governing body. The committee members serve a two-year term with no more than two consecutive terms. The open term, which ends October 8, 2020, was created by the resignation of Beverly Glass. Nancy Gosha has submitted her application to be considered to fill the unexpired term on the committee, ending October 8, 2020. Her application has been attached for your review. The alternatives is to appoint Nancy to serve on the committee, filling the expired term, ending October 8, 2020. Two, appoint another applicant to serve on the committee. Three, delay the appointment until another date to solicit more interest. The Fannie County Transit Advisory Committee and staff recommends appointing Nancy Gosha to the Transit Advisory Committee for the expired term, ending October 8, 2020. She is here, present, if you have any questions for Nancy, and also Rhonda and Marcy's here from the Transit, if you have questions for them on this issue.
Any questions from Commissioners?
Is Marcy the new director?
Uh, no, Rhonda is.
Rhonda, okay, I've not gotten a chance. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve Nancy Gosha to the Fannie County Transit Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Nancy Gosha. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Nancy Gosha to the Transit Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You bet.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the destruction of specific records from two thousand thirteen and older, as provided by the Kansas State Historical Society Department of Archives, and section two dash seven forty-two of the code ordinances of the City of Garden City. Selena?
Um, Mayor and Commissioners, um, this is customary, we do this normally, we do this in January, um, I was unable to put that on the agenda until now, uh, we have records from police department municipal court, um, and we don't keep them forever, we don't have space to keep them forever, so, um, this is just customary approval from the governing body.
Shred.
To just shred, to shred them, yes.
Okay, they entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve and destroy the specific records from two thousand thirteen and older from municipal court and police departments as identified in the.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve to, uh, the destruction of specific records from two thousand thirteen and over. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Item F, as an executive session, we do not anticipate any action being, uh, necessary following that executive session, so we'll conclude with that, if that's all right with the Commission. So that has us ready for the consent agenda, there's no recommended changes, if you want to pull one of those items off and discuss them separately, you may do so, otherwise the appropriate motion would be, uh, to approve consent agenda items G one through five.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items G one through G five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, uh, G one through five. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. The Commissioner report, Commissioner Burns.
Yes, thank you, um, so I, I just want to make one point, um, about public comment, I think it's really important, I appreciate the gentleman who came today, um, I was actually giving Jennifer a hard time about the book she's reading before, uh, before the meeting, which is about giving feedback, um, and yet that is so important, and I think, um, that's been a, a challenge for me as a new Commissioner, something I've discussed with Mr. Allen, um, and that we've discussed as a group about how we get feedback about how we're doing our jobs, how you give us feedback, and really, the main portal of that is through public comment and public participation, and so, um, we've talked, um, Mr. Sessner raised the idea, um, about, do we continue with town hall meetings when we just don't have any public participation, uh, or very limited public participation, and I think that's a valid thing when we're starting to weigh time, um, commitments of, of both, um, staff and the public, and yet at the same time, it's such a vital part of how we function as an organization and as a commission, and so, um, certainly the points made by the gentleman today, and I, I regret that I didn't, uh, write his name down, but I, I appreciate that, it's taken into account, and I think that will stick in our brains as we talk about, um, further ordinances, and as we talk about some of these big projects that we're going to have to authorize, um, so thank you for that, and I think that stands for, um, so many of our governmental processes, I think that more debate, more public comment is always useful, um, a- at every level, um, and even that extends to, uh, the State House and, um, the federal government, where we see debate being limited just because of rules and the way things are brought up, and who is in charge of which committees, and I find that that's stifling to our democracy, and I would hope that we, um, you know, uh, certainly at our level and what we can control, um, do a better job. Um, the second point, um, that I wanted to make is, in September, I brought up, um, the idea of the city looking into, uh, paid family leave, um, as an organization and as an employer policy. Since that time, we've seen the state of Kansas move towards that, and I think I'd like to just bring that up again for staff, maybe we could have a presentation on that and, and look at it, and I think we're in a financial position, um, it was a, it was a nice report from, um, Melinda today, and I think that's something that we can look at, um, further, uh, for benefit as a, as an employing organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessner.
Uh, very good pre-meeting, uh, a lot of good information about horse thief reservoir, always, uh, good to see all the great activity going on, uh, there, um, was surprised at the, uh, how many visitors they have gotten over just in a year's period, over a hundred thousand, so that's really nice to see that it's being utilized, um, you know, again, it's, uh, used a lot of taxpayer dollars to get that, that, um, quality of life, um, facility, uh, built, uh, so it's nice that it's being utilized, uh, for what, uh, was built for. Um, again, heavy heart that goes out to one of my fellow Commissioners that's leaving us, but, uh, I want to thank him for his leadership, his, uh, input, and his, uh, passion that he's had on, on the commission over the last number of years, and just thank you for all that you've done, uh, not only for our community, but, um, in all the others' endeavors that you've been involved with, uh, you know, protecting our nation, as well as our community, and, uh, being on the city commission, so, uh, thank you, and I wish you the best of luck and your endeavors as you take that next step in your, in your life, in that chapter, as you move forward. Um, want to thank the, um, street department for the great job that they've done on the, the recent kind of snow event that we've had, um, uh, they were out plowing and salting, uh, the areas, trying to keep it safe, so, uh, just like to say thank you for what they've done, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Dale.
Okay, uh, the pre-meeting was excellent today, I got a lot of information about horse thief, and I was really surprised, again, at the numbers and the amount of activity going on out there, so, I, uh, I think that's, uh, been a big plus, it's, uh, it was able to hold water and, and come into its existence and being, and.
Little.
Yeah, well, it was important, it was never, it was never supposed to fill up, but in any way, it was great. Um, hey, to Fred, Fred has done a wonderful job, and, and, and while I was here for six years, since, uh, he became the water czar, he brought in.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's a new term.
When I, when I first came here, I think one of the, the first things that we had was, we had a, a lady, and I won't mention her name, very nice lady, and she, she came before the committee and, and commission, and, and was upset that she was getting rusty water in her pipes, and she left with the impression that, uh, that if you live in an older neighborhood of town, that you have to live with them, well, she came back.
Used dark towels.
She came back later with a, a jar of water that was hard to look through, that she got from her tap, and she brought in two towels, one was white and new, and this one here looked kind of grayish, and a pair of sheets and whatever, well, after that, things got rolling, and I don't know how many miles or yards, or however you want to put that into effect, but we've, the city is, is supported and funded, and, and, uh, and Mr. Jones has got the job done, and to a lot of people are now receiving quality water as they should, and to many houses, and a lot of lines have either been cleaned, replaced, or repaired. How many miles do you think we've done right now, Fred?
Uh, I should know that, but I don't, I, I know we've put in a little over two miles of road mains just in the last couple of years.
Now, that's just, that you've put in, and there's a lot of, of feet of, of cleaning, so, it's, it's, one of the things that we do as a commission, to give to our community is, is a quality place to live and, and, and to have electricity, sewer, and water, which are expectation, because you actually, you pay for those things and get it, and I think through the staff and, and the employees, we have delivered those things year after year, and when they're, when they say something, we listen and we, we act, so, thank you, Fred, and to all the department heads, thank you for what you have done, it's been a pleasure to have worked with all of you, and it's been a pleasure to be here with this commission, and Matt, his guidance, and Ms. Jennifer, the fireball. It's been my pleasure, and I, I thank the citizens, and thank all of you very much for this opportunity to have been able to serve you. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
So, um, I want to say thank you for the excellent, uh, report, uh, financial report, it was outstanding, and seeing where we are financially is very encouraging, um, there are not many cities that can tout that kind of economic report, and I think that's, everyone's has done an incredible job from Matt on down, and so thank you for that. Um, the pre-meeting was excellent, it was great to be with the county Commissioners, um, and having time spent with them, I think, you know, every once, when we get a chance to talk with them, I think we really do have a lot in common, and I think, uh, as moving forward, I think that should be more of a, where more invitations are made, I think there's a lot of work that we need to do, um, as governing bodies in our community, and I think, you know, that really gives us direction where they need to go. I do want to remind, and I, you know, Commissioner Burns reminds me, that lots of times you don't think that, that things are open, but the pre-meetings are open to anyone, they are excellent, and so, if you have time, I know the time of day might not work out, but I'll tell you, if you can spend some time, the pre-meetings have excellent information, um, they really provide direction, and it's a chance to really talk openly with the, with the city commission, and today you could have had the county commission, too, um, and I think also this idea of the, how we're going to choose our next Commissioner, um, is, I, I like it that it's, uh, it's, it's always been a transparent policy, but I think that, again, this idea of really making it available, and so, even though it's going to be hard to, um, to say goodbye, I think it's, I know it's, he's going to be closer, he and his wife are going to be closer to family, and so, and I doubt that, I mean, that city doesn't know what hit it, so, you know, when they get there, so, I mean, we'll be praying for them, um, there, um, and just, I just want to just, uh, lead a round of applause, and just another, to say thank you for all that you've done, so.
I'll agree with everyone on the, the pre-meeting, it was very good, and the, uh, the water report and Melinda's report were excellent. Um, I do have a question, Caleb, what, where do we stand on approving the new, um, international building code renewal?
We are in the stages of the first draft, we just reviewed the first draft of that.
Two thousand eighteen.
Uh-huh, with our, with our consultants, there's some changes that we've had to modify based on the requests that came in from all of our meetings with contractors, and so we're addressing those, and, uh, that's with other things that have happened, it's taken us a little bit longer, uh, to do that, but we're in the process of, of finishing up that first draft, we'll be taking that back to, um, our committee, um, on that, that'll then go to the board of, uh, Building Board of Safety Appeals, uh, with, and then they'll bring forward to you a recommendation for.
So it'll probably be April?
It's probably looking like April.
April.
Yes.
And it, it seemed like we discussed, if you can use either the two thousand nine or the two thousand eighteen code for six months?
Yes.
After it's approved.
We use a six-month, uh, timeframe whenever we do that, just like we did with all previous adoption changes, yes.
Okay, I hadn't heard that, um, thank you.
You bet.
Um, the only other thing was, uh, driving north, talking about the cemetery on Third, the road, uh, we fill those cracks, but they're really bad, again, I drive that road coming back Colorado, and, uh, it's thump, 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 I mean, we've got some big cracks in that, uh, Third Street, and that gets quite a, I don't know the count.
Is it adjacent to the cemetery or?
Yeah, adjacent to the cemetery. Um, I also wanted to, to thank Commissioner Dale for, for his service, and, uh, you know, I'm going to miss having you over at Traditions for lunch, and I don't know how I'll get along, but you may have to come, come back and, uh, buy you a lunch sometime.
It'll be the first time.
Yes.
But I appreciate, uh, you've been a, a good Commissioner, a good friend, and, uh, I wish you the best from here on, thank you. Okay.
Let me say one thing, that his tires thump because he doesn't buy a good VU.
Well, we'll let the jabs begin with our reception across the hall, and we didn't, we didn't invite everybody over there, we apologize that we have an executive session that's, uh, going to happen in between and cause a little bit of delay, but certainly, uh, friends, family, staff, anybody who's, uh, present here, or comes up, uh, once they know the meeting's over, and that there's cake, uh, that's going to be happening across the hall, and, uh, we'll celebrate Commissioner Dale, so, the appropriate motion at this point in time, if the Commission wishes to go into executive session, would be, uh, to enter into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two pertaining to the consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and specifically related to contract negotiations.
Correct. Would that be Randy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Matt.
Do you, would you like to be?
I'd like to be, yeah, I don't need to.
All right.
Is that all right?
Is there anybody else?
Decision.
Uh, we would like Jennifer, Matt, and Sam.
And Sam?
Sam.
And me.
And Randy. I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two pertaining to consultation with attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, specifically contract negotiations with Randy Griselle, Jennifer Cunningham, Matt Allen, Sam Curran, for.
And Jennifer Cunningham.
And Jennifer Cunningham.
Ten minutes? Ten minutes?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say Jennifer.
All right, be two forty, two fifty-eight.
Until two fifty-eight.
Not a minute longer.
Exactly, some of us need a break.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive.
Who seconded?
Who seconded it? I did.
I will.
He seconded.
Oh, he did, okay, that's fine.
You did it?
No, I didn't, but I will.
Yes, okay.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we move to executive session, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
All right, there won't be any, uh, action taken after the meeting, so we can take.